Convening the meeting of Wednesday, November 15, 2007. This is the Westboro Board of Selectmen. We are reopening the meeting. We started earlier as a quick opening, then went into executive session with the Water Department. But I'll ask the attendees to please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. And for those just joining us, if you would, please make certain your cellphones are on silent. 7:00 PM. We were supposed to have a tax classification hearing. David, we're still required to open the hearing?
That is absolutely yes.
Okay, now let's entertain a motion to open the hearing.
Motion.
A second. A motion, a second. David?
Yep, so we're required by law to post this 14 days in advance, so at the time, we thought that the assessors would be ready. Unfortunately, they're not. So what I will ask you to do is your next meeting is December 6th, so I'll ask you to take a formal vote to continue the hearing until December 6th at 7:00 PM.
Motion to the effect.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Goldner, welcome.
Hello.
Scott's here for some borrowing items.
We just have the annual borrowing on our municipal purpose loan. Last year, we borrowed about 3.1 million. This year, it's going to be down to $2,074,025. This covers the salt shed, the trucks, the water painting on the tank.
You got a good rate?
Yep, we got a rate of 1.27. That was the best. That was through TD Bank. It's the same people who had the loan last year. So I just need some signatures.
Town clerk certificate with the details on it.
Does it matter what color it's cut?
No.
This is three copies saying that it's tactically exempt. And that's it.
Very much.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, going on to warrants, Board of Selectmen Business. Appoint Tracy Aldrich to the Assistant Town Administrator position. David?
Sure. So as you know, unfortunately, our Assistant Town Administrator has been promoted at another town to Town Administrator, so congratulations to her. We were also very fortunate, though, that we had somebody in our office that we all, individually, after discussing it, thought that she was more than capable of doing the job. So after consultation with this board, I sat down with Ms. Aldrich. Tracy has accepted the position, so I will ask you to formally appoint her as Assistant Town Administrator, and her contract, as directed by the board, is in front of you for your ratification.
I would like to appoint Tracy to that position.
Second. Any further discussion? I just want to say that Tracy was a great addition to the family, and you had some tough shoes to fill. You filled them well, and you have some more tough shoes to fill moving up one position, and it's a great -- you've been a great asset to us, and you fit right in. And I know you love the community just as much as Mallory does, but you actually live here. This is great. Very good.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and I look forward to the opportunity.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discuss Shaw's Plaza Communications. I'd ask this to be on the agenda tonight. I'd like to send a letter to the owners of the plaza. You may or may not be aware, a couple years back, we got some special legislation to try to help that plaza. The special legislation would allow one liquor store and one full-service sit-down restaurant liquor license. That'll be -- that's in addition to the license that already exists in town. That was under the premise that we're really trying to focus on that being our economic development target area. It's come to my attention a number of times, not only from residents, but also the former store manager, that the -- obviously, the biggest store down there right now is the Dollar Tree, and handicap accessibility is minimal, to say the most. To say the least, I'm sorry. There is no ramp even really close to that store, and the doors are not automatic for handicap entry. We do have two over 55 communities there. I would like to ask the Assistant Town Administrator to send a strongly worded letter asking them to voluntarily comply. They are in compliance with the ADA rules. However, we feel as a good business in town and as a good neighbor that perhaps they could -- the minimum they could do is make those some handicap accessible doors and a ramp immediately in front of that store, which I guess is actually the anchor store to that whole plaza right now. So I'd like the blessing of the board as a vote to send that communication.
Yeah, you've got my blessing, but two years ago, I tried to do the same thing you're trying to do right now, and good luck, and I hope to make you more successful than I was. I got hold of the management, and they never got back to me. And then finally, I got a call, and they said that they were going to put me in touch with the people that own it, and so there was never any communication that came back from it there. This gets talked over with meetings as I go in Brockton when the mayor is present. You're well aware, and now there's a rumor that came out is leaving that plaza, whether that's true or not. That'll be -- but yeah, I think it's great if we can get that moving, you know, bring in jobs and that, all of those things, Gary. It's a good idea, and like you said, we were looking forward. We get the liquor licenses there to go in there to try to promote that plaza, but something's got to be done there. They talk about the -- always talking about the drainage and the wetness in there, but it just don't seem to be that anybody you talk to, they -- there hasn't been any movement. I hope now you can get some more movement. I guess the squeaky wheel gets the grease, so just get hold of them and see what we can do.
Well, a little bit over a year ago, I did have a very nice discussion with a young lady in their office in New York, and they were very friendly, very kind. We weren't asking them for anything. We were just communicating about the plaza, and I will take a moment to commend the convenience store next door. They weren't required to by law, but they did add a ramp. I had personally sent them a letter as an individual member of the board. I sent him a letter, and they complied, adding a ramp to their building. It's not full access, but it gives some access to the property, so they should be commended for taking the voluntary efforts, and I hope the owner of that south side plaza does the same.
Move it forward?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve half-year calendar. You have the half-year calendar of meetings. Of course, these are subject to change within the rights of public posting. If there is any changes, of course, those will meet all requirements for the open meeting laws. So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve the meeting minutes of October 8th.
So moved?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Appeal of Order of Inspector Building. David?
Sure. So the owner of 225 South Street, apparently, the building office has received numerous complaints. It's a residential area, and there are large commercial vehicles, apparently, that are being stored there, used there, and that would be in violation of our residential district. So therefore, the building inspector sent a noncompliance order. The owner of that house decided to appeal his decision. The appeal goes to the Board of Appeals. However, per your bylaws, you have an opportunity to be able to review it, weigh in on it, and send any comments over to the Zoning Board of Appeals before they make a decision. You could see on page 27 as to what that house looks like, at least in that picture, and from what I'm told, is a fairly consistent issue with large trucks parked in an area that should not be parked there. So it is just really a matter as to what, if any, comments you would like to pass along to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Do they have a date scheduled for their hearing?
They haven't -- no, this just got sent over, so to my knowledge, there is no date yet.
All right. I don't have anything. I know the building inspector. I had been approached from residents on that area. I had sent them on to the building inspector, and that's -- other than some communication back and forth, this is the result that the building inspectors come up with, so I don't have anything to forward on to the board.
I agree. I've just read this, and I have no issues with the building inspector's findings.
Ellen, you have anything?
No, I don't have either. I think he's doing his job and doing it well.
Okay. Yes.
I don't know. Am I allowed to ask?
That's why I'm calling on you. Yep, gear up.
Well, it's not in reference to this, but just because I'm here, and we had that issue in our neighborhood, and I was told that they went to the selectmen and got an okay to be, I don't know who, on your board, but that's what they were claiming, that they talked to the selectmen. It's the same issue, though.
I don't know.
Yeah.
No one talked to me.
Yeah, so my recommendation is if you have a similar situation--
Go to the building.
-- to go to the building department, put something in writing, logic complaint with him. He will then have to go from there.
Okay. Any further? Nothing to send on? Okay, act on borough -- oh, I'm sorry. Ratify Assistant Vehicle Maintenance Superintendent's Contract Amendment.
Yep. So Mr. Chairman, as you know, since we had the merger of the Highway and Forestry Superintendent, the mechanic has always had the title of Assistant Vehicle Maintenance Superintendent. There is no Vehicle Maintenance Superintendent anymore, so it only seemed appropriate to drop the word assistant and just make him the Vehicle Maintenance Superintendent. You proposed this in a strategy session at your last meeting. I provided it to the mechanic, and he signed his amendment. It's before you for your ratification and signature.
Motion to grant.
Second. I just -- though the verbiage in here allows him to -- informs him that he answers still under the direction of Shawn as assistant, I do think a second letter needs to follow up, that Chris is ultimately the authority in that department. But other than that, I am okay with it. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Borough Boys Foundation request to sell Christmas trees in Reeds November 25th through the 23rd. I think they've been doing this since before my time. I remember going there buying trees, so. And annually, we approve this, and we waive their fee, along with a letter reminding them to remove any and all signage within 48 hours of them no longer selling the trees. So moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Communication reports from boards, commissions, and town officials? We have none. Correspondents from the public determine a course of action? We have none. Public comment period? I have a few things I'd like to bring up to the board. As you know, here on Wednesday night, we have evening hours. I would like to send communication to the DPW Director, Chris Lianatelli, to see if there's a way we could manipulate some hours with his men to make sure that the transfer station perhaps covered one evening a week. I think it would be nice if it coincided with the hours at Town Hall. Right now, the transfer station's open until 4:30. It is open on Saturdays, but on Saturdays, a lot of people are working, so this would give one evening of hours. I don't want it to be any additional cost or any additional labor, but if there is a way to possibly scatter some hours for a couple hours' coverage on Wednesday night, I think that would be a great.
I think, don't we specify the hours in the contract, so we'd have to figure something out with that?
If we can look into that. I know that's just a dream. Also, I had the honor of being at the Bridgewater's Rotary Club Citizen of the Year Ceremony last night. I was there with the police chief. I had the honor of presenting, along with the chief, Billy Cavadas, the Citizen of the Year Award, annually awarded by the Rotary Club, as one of the three communities covered by that Rotary Club. It's Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, and West Bridgewater. For years, the ceremony's been held in Bridgewater. It's moved to East Bridgewater. I would like West Bridgewater to invite the Rotary Club to host their event at the Senior Center in future years. I don't know if we need an official vote on this, or if it needs to be on the agenda at the next meeting, but it's a great program. It recognizes some really outstanding people, and I think to play our role as a community that reaps the benefit of all the Rotary Club does, it would be nice if we offered to be the host community, and I think it would be nice to showcase our Senior Center as has been done in East Bridgewater. So I would just like to be able to offer that in writing to the Rotary Club facilities.
Yeah, we'll place that on the next meeting's agenda.
Great, thank you. Okay, Town Administrator's Report.
Wait, wait, Gary. I got one thing.
Yes, oh, sorry, Ellen.
And this box over here, goodies there, this was given to me by Mr. Prado in Mathew Street. This goes back to 1905 there, where you could buy a suit there for $10, and it also has a grove of fire there that happened in Brockton where a boiler was blown up, and there's a lot of history here. There's all copies of the climbers and that, and I'd like this maybe, you know, given to the Historical Commission for their museum out here, Old Fire Station, and maybe a letter of thanks to Mr. Prado in Mathew Street for donating all these goodies. There's a lot of class pictures over there where it's interesting to go through it. The one that I go, being on this board there, was Mr. Thayer, who I remember being on our school committee, but other than that, but this is now the property of the town of West Bridgewater, and I just hope that you can follow it through and give it to the -- for their museum out behind here.
So that's a motion to send a letter of thanks?
A letter of thanks to Mr. Prado.
Motion of second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we will forward those items to the Historic Commission. Well, it's a good way to let anyone know that's watching, if you do have historic documents or any historic memorabilia from town, and you're cleaning out your house, someone deceased, or just cleaning out an attic, and you find these items, please don't throw them away. Our Historic Commission will be very, very happy to receive them, and if they don't belong in town, they'll find the right places that they belong, and if they do, they'll go in our new museum.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you, Ellen. Denise?
We attended the assessors' meeting, and we were told that the reason we're not having the tax rate discussion is because the data or information that needed to be due to the DOR wasn't provided to them, so they can't approve the records. Just wondering, it must have been some discussions, I would think, over the past month about where our tax rate might head. I know you can't answer that question, but do we have any idea on where our appraisals are heading on our homes, the residential values?
That would have been the assessors to answer that.
No, I was just curious if you've had any discussions.
That's usually what we hear to know. We usually meet with them, and they usually give a very in-depth slideshow and a nice big packet, color-coded, showing all the property values and ups and downs, and that's what we're expecting to go through tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, David?
Sure. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. So on page 33, you'll see that from the Old Colony Planning Council, that what they do is they put out some road count meters on the corner of East Street and East Center Street and a couple of surrounding little areas as well. Just really an FYI, although it just happened this past week. It's really an FYI to the board, but it was also, I think that this is where we get a lot of value out of OCPC. With no charge to us, they're going to be able to give us what our traffic count is in the area, so if in the future, we want to be able to add businesses there, we want to be able to expand the road, obviously, we're going to be putting a street light. It's just really helpful information that doesn't cost the town of West Bridgewater anything, so really just an FYI to the board.
I did -- so, go ahead, Ellen.
I'd like to follow up there. We're also working over there on Crescent Street, as of each 106, no left turn. I've got complaints on that, the way that the traffic bunches up there, and it's a very, very difficult situation coming into that. If you take a left turn or you're coming into Crescent Street, you know if you're going to get hit head-on off on the right to the left. I think we should do something. There's a long-term solution, the lights there, but we're not at that point. Continuing to study it, and I know it's not on the agenda because Dave said he forgot to put it on the agenda. I would like to have that on the agenda for the next meeting. At least do something there, and I know that it's a difficult situation. One of the things was to make no left turn on Lincoln Street. I think that would be too much of an impact on the people that live down there. At least the traffic is pretty well stopped, and they can get in there, but I think Crescent Street should be addressed. Another thing addressed in the last week, North Elm Street meets Copeland Street, there's a bump in the road. One of the truck drivers almost lost control of his truck. The water department went up there and did fix that problem. We were trying to decide whatever was in Brockton. I said, "I don't care where it is, let's fix it," and I guess West Bridgewater fixed it and get rid of that. So, you know, we're out there if -- and the other thing that I gave Dave, and I haven't even talked to the board there, we all like flags and all waving up there next to our high school field there, but one of the people out there that says that that is a disaster when you're walking up there, if one of those flags there hits you in the eye, you could lose an eye, the liability. So I don't know who putting them out there and everything else. It's all right when everything is calm, but when the wind is blowing, they're out there and people are walking on the sidewalk. So I asked Dave if he would look into that, and he hasn't got back to me on that yet.
I can answer. The flags were there for one day for the fair only, and they've been taken down.
They've been taken down now?
Yes.
Okay.
And they go up every year, and they come down the next day.
Right. Well, they were there more than one day, but I'm not going to argue that point. But that's where we are. Thank you, Dave.
Sure. So next is an update on North Elm Street and Copeland Street, which I think we just got, but at the last meeting, Selectman Marrera brought it up. I had a conversation with the Water Superintendent. We did fill the hole, as you said earlier, that is often handled, so no issues with that. And as you said earlier, Selectman Marrera, at lunch, you had brought up about the flags. I did take a drive up there. The flags were already down by 1:00.
Okay.
Last is, is that I had mentioned this at a previous meeting. One of my concerns is that especially with what's happened with Las Vegas and church sitting in San Antonio, and certainly nothing new, unfortunately, in America, is the issue of security and making sure that we can keep our employees safe and the patrons, our residents that visit the Town Hall safe as well. So I was able to find a grant that was available through an insurance company, Maya, for an upgrade of security system. So I applied for that grant. I already received a quote. Hopefully, we'll be able to secure the grant. It'll still take probably another month or maybe two months before we find out, but if so, it would pay 100% to be able to add surveillance cameras into the facility. The police chief was very helpful in it, and what we would do is we were tied directly into the police chief, so, into the police station, I'm sorry. So again, I just wanted the board to know that we're certainly taking public safety of our residents and our employees seriously with the building.
David, can I ask, I don't know if I mentioned this to you before, I know I spoke to Ellen, would this grant separately be available to the library, or is it one, the town applies once? My issue there is, you know, when they have the evening hours, there's a lot of areas that they can't see from the front desk. There's a side door, there's a front door. Anything could be going on. There's lots of kids in there, you know, intermingling with strangers, especially after school. It would be nice if there was some type of surveillance in the alcoves where they can't regularly see from the front desk. So if that's possible, I don't mean to throw that onto you or throw a wrench into the grant, but that's--
Nope, nope. That grant happens to be closed, but by all means, if we see another one available, we certainly can take a look at it.
Great, thank you. Okay. Moving back up on the agenda. The time is 7:23. We have two interviews for police fire chief, sorry. Sorry, but I got rid of you, chief. Fire chief. Our first interview is with Patrick Haskell. Welcome, come on up.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, there's a lot of people out here. I don't know if they're all--
Oh, there's a lot of people out there.
If you're all here for the interviews, we're starting. If you want to come in, you're welcome to.
All right. Once again, good evening, and Patrick, welcome.
Thank you.
What we'll do is we'll start out the interviews. We'll give you a few minutes to talk about yourself, let us know a little bit about you, and why you think you're a good fit for the Westboro Fire Department, and then I will open up to questions to the board and the town administrator.
Okay. Thank you very much for having me. First, just let me apologize for the last meeting that I was unable to attend due to my illness. I've been in the fire service since 1995. I served on the same fire department in Wareham. Worked my way up through the ranks to Assistant Fire Chief, where I hold that position now. But I'm a fourth generation in my family in the fire department, and along with being on the fire department, I also serve on the State Hazardous Materials Response Team. I'm an instructor for the State of Massachusetts Firefighting Academy, along with some other entities for the Department of Fire Services. Okay? I serve as the Vice Chairman for the Buzzards Bay Marine Response Task Force, which was a committee that I was in the infinite stages of forming. Basically, we formed a response group of all communities that touched Buzzards Bay from maritime incidents, back going three years ago, and it's been very successful to this point. I wrote in a few successful grants in my department. I brought almost $600,000 in the last five years of grant money into my department. So that's just kind of a little bit about me.
So, Maro, do you have any questions?
Yeah, well, I'm only on the building in Wareham, and I always say some part of the things with them down there. You didn't know me personally, but where do you feel you can make the difference in the fire department here?
Well, I feel I can bring my talents that I've gained through my years of service into the fire chief position in this community. Size-wise, it's very similar to where I am now. Budget-wise, it's very similar. I like to lead from the front. I like to bring in new ideas and new things to departments to try to make the department the best it can be in the area, and I feel I can do that for you.
How about, you have your own ambulance in Wareham, as far as that, you run that out of the fire station?
No, the ambulance in Wareham is the third service. It's the third public safety service.
How do you feel? People's person or?
Yeah, I'm people person. I get along with just about anybody, you know? I'm very optimistic. I'm very open. I listen to everybody else. I don't rush to judgment, you know?
You said you brought a lot of grant money in there, you were writing grants?
Yes.
That correct?
I wrote a communications grant for radios, and I wrote an SCBA grant for breathing apparatus.
I have no other questions. Selectman Kenan?
What do you see as your, if given this opportunity, what do you see as your biggest challenge?
The biggest challenge is coming into a new community that I don't live here. I was, you know, the only thing is, it's size-wise, it's similar. I'll have to learn my way with the people that work on the department, gain their respect, gain their trust, and work hand-in-hand with the rest of the people within the community, selectmen, town administrator, et cetera.
What's the leadership team in Wareham? What's the structure look like?
We have a Board of Prudential Committee, which is a five-member board, which is basically the selectmen of the fire district.
As far as the fire department leadership, chief, deputy chief?
Yeah, we have a fire chief, two assistant fire chiefs, four shift captains, lieutenant fire prevention, and then firefighters on the shift.
Currently as deputy chief, are you more administrative, nine-to-five, or are you working a shift?
I'm administrative. I work four 10-hour days.
Could you tell me more about the hazardous material response team? What that is, what you do with that?
So basically, the hazardous materials response team is run by the Department of Fire Services through the State of Massachusetts, and basically, the easiest terms is they rent me when they need me. It doesn't cost the community anything, so if there's an incident somewhere in the response area, and I go, off-duty, they pay for me; on-duty, they pay you. Okay? So it doesn't cost-- Okay, so it doesn't cost the community any money whatsoever, they take care of everything. So basically, they rent me in a time of need from the local department.
And I'll be totally honest, my biggest concern is not having the EMS experience where we're very heavy EMS. How would you overcome that?
Well, I've worked on an ambulance in the past. My department runs medicals, except we just don't transport. We go with an injured company to medicals, we just don't transport the patient. Back probably within the last 10 years, I had worked part-time on an ambulance, in the ambulance in my community, so I'm kind of familiar with its running, but yes, you're correct, we do not operate an ambulance.
Okay, I have no other questions. Okay, thank you. If you were chosen as chief, would you relocate to West Bridgewater?
Well, that would have to be a discussion I'd have to have with my family and see what the best fit would be. It's not out of the question, but obviously that's a conversation that would have to happen.
All right. And in the last year or so, have you applied in any of the other departments to be chief?
I applied in one, yes, sir.
Did you visit the West Bridgewater Fire Department in preparation for tonight's interview?
I have not visited, but I've done some online research of the department. I have been there in the past through the Fire Academy years ago, but I can't say that I've been there recently.
Now, if I had access to your performance reviews, I don't know if your fire chief does performance reviews or not, but if I had access to them, what's he going to tell me is your really strong point?
My real strong point is, is I can basically be given a task and take the task on and be successful at it. If I struggle with it, I know enough to come forward to ask for help, and I know where to go to ask for the help.
Okay. Now, in any good performance review, they tell you what you do well, but they're also going to tell you what you need to improve. What's your chief going to tell you you need to work on?
My ability to say no. I like to try to make him happy as much as possible, and sometimes it's not as successful, and he tells me once in a while, "It's okay to say, you know, can't do that."
And do you have much interaction with management of the budget?
I do. We were just recently going through our budget in preparation now, the three of us, the chief and the other assistant chief and myself, every year we sit down, we go through the budget. Of course, the chief is the final say because he has to bring it forward to the Board of Prudential Committee, but yeah, we assist hand-in-hand, bringing ideas, we go to the membership of the department, ask for requests, we sit down and take the requests in, we make a decision whether we're going to move forward on it or not.
Administrator, do you have any questions?
I do not, thank you.
Assistant Administrator, it's official now, you have any questions?
I do not.
Very good. Anything else from the board? Any follow-up questions? Okay, very good. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you very much for your time, I really do appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Could somebody send Mr. May in if he's out in the hallway?
How are you?
How are you today? Welcome, yes, please.
Glad to have you.
Welcome. All right. So May, what we're going to do is we're going to give you a few minutes to introduce yourself, let us know why you think you should be West Bridgewater's next fire chief upon conclusion of your introduction and your time talking about your credentials, so we'll go to Selectman Marrera and Selectman McKinnon and myself, we'll ask some questions. Upon completion of that, we'll ask the administrator if he has anything, and we did have a screening committee, so we'll ask for the recommendations. Kenny?
All right, Kenneth May, you live on 492 Spring Street in West Bridgewater, currently the Deputy Fire Chief here in West Bridgewater. Came out of the department in August 1988 as a qualified firefighter, and then hired full-time in 1993 by Chief Hunt. And worked my way up through all classes, education, Mass. Soit, whole nine yards, and tremendous love of the town, community, worked hard, I have a fantastic group of guys I'm looking forward to working with, and with the best interest of my heart to continue to build and protect this in West Bridgewater, keep these guys safe, and continue the growth. Look forward to doing it.
Thank you. Slough Marrera?
Yeah, you've been here a long time, and you know what it was there and what it is now, and where do you see that you'd like to change over there now, it's not being done?
Currently, the day-to-day operations, unfortunately, I've worked as a deputy for the last couple of years and got our day-to-day operations going really well. Like I said, I'm always as good as the guys I have here working with me, and they do a great job, and currently, the day-to-day operations is going smoothly as time goes along with the work with all together as a group, communication with each other to move in direction where we all need to go, just to improve, you know, on what we have.
How are you as far as, you know, writing grants or bringing in the money?
I have, right now, I have written a couple of grants and I've gotten about over $200,000 worth of equipment from the federal government, including SCOTD air packs, jaws of life, hose, airbags, currently so far, and continue to work to do that.
I know you've worked diligently with the administrator here, you know, and anything you want, and we try to be very tentative, and I feel that you are a people's person, and always considerate, and also having that heavy ambulance service out there, and I know you participate in that and hope to probably continue to do that. It seems to be that the rules on that are getting stricter and stricter all the time, and you have to keep up with that, you know?
Yeah, I started when we were small, and we worked right up through to where we're at today.
And it's a lot of lucky, you know, you have a great crew behind you, I see them all standing up here.
Like I said, I'm always as good as the guys I got with me.
That's true. No more questions.
Okay. Slough McKinnon.
If given the opportunity, what do you see as your biggest challenge? How would you overcome it?
Well, my biggest challenge is I gotta just, I learn to delegate more, you know, I mean, I said, I've always kind of done things on my own, and I think by putting people in the right places, that it's going to make it a lot easier to get things done and accomplished for the best interest of all of us.
What are some of the tasks that you delegate out? I know currently you do licenses.
Just inspectional purposes, training purposes, helping with financial purposes, just in the work in general, it's just to make the load easier so we can concentrate on the higher-end administration and to get the work done properly.
Do you know what the fire department's budget is?
It's like $2.1 million, I think.
Okay.
Involved too much in Chief Hunt's budget so much, so...
Do you have any educational or professional licensure ambitions, certifications, any ambitions that you have that you'd like to pursue?
I just want to just continue to keep myself up to date on all the trainings and everything else that's coming down, just to, everything's changing so regularly, it's a constant battle to keep up with everything, and that's my goal, is just to keep up the gate and keep everything safe for everybody.
Right, thank you. Nothing else.
Well, I know you live in town, that was in the introduction. Have you applied in any other community since you've been a firefighter in the last couple of years to be a chief or any other position in other departments?
Since I started here, this was my goal, to stay here and work my way all the way up to the top.
I know you've visited the department numerous times in preparation for tonight's interviews. You mentioned that perhaps you think the budget's going to be an area of question that you haven't had much experience with. How do you plan on bringing yourself up to speed on that?
Well, fortunately, I fortunately have fun with work with Chief Hunt until he leaves, and then there's some stuff I can look at, and the police chief has offered a lot of services to help me in that direction.
Very good. If we were going into your personnel file and there's a personnel review in your file of your performance over the last couple of years, what's Chief Hunt say you need to work on to improve?
I was going to go back on what I just talked the other thing about, is just delegation, that's one thing I have to work on, and I think that by putting people in the right places, that's going to make things a lot easier for me to do.
Okay, and of course, in the same review, he's going to tell you to do something wonderful. What is it? What's your strongest attribute you could bring to the town?
Well, hopefully to bring some more community service and community education to the town and more community involvement.
Great, okay. Do our administrators have any questions?
I do not.
Okay. Okay, chief, we, our chief's here, police chief who was on the screening committee along with our administrator, Mallory, she's not with us, but we do have some recommendations. David?
Before we get to the recommendations, would you like me to bring in the other?
Sure, anyone else, yeah, anyone that wants to come in, absolutely.
No, should bring in the other candidate.
Yeah, is he still here? Welcome to come up. I'm sorry, I was just pointing out that our former administrator, Assistant Administrator Mallory Cole, well, she's still here till tomorrow, tomorrow's her last day, along with the police chief, were on the pre-screening committee, and we have recommendations along with that of our town administrator to be presented to the board. David?
Thank you. This is from the Assistant Town Administrator. The fire chief screening committee conducted two interviews on Tuesday, October 24th. A third candidate selected for an interview was unable to attend. The screening committee voted to forward these two individuals onto the Board of Selectmen for final interviews. The candidates are Kenneth May and Patrick Haskell. The committee voted to endorse and recommend Mr. May for appointment as fire chief. While the committee found both candidates to be qualified, capable individuals who would propel the fire department forward, Mr. May indicated clear leadership and management style, and was able to specifically discuss programs and changes he would like to institute in the department. My recommendation to you, to the board is as follows. I interviewed both Deputy Chief Haskell and Deputy Chief May. Honestly, I found both candidates deserving of the position. Mr. Haskell is straightforward, professional, and I believe has the skill set to be a fire chief. I found all the same qualities for Mr. May. After weighing all of the facts, it became clear to me that Deputy Chief May would be the best fit for the department. As a result, I enthusiastically endorsed Deputy Chief May in an agreement with the recommendation of the search committee. I recommend the board appoint Deputy Chief May as the next fire chief for the town of West Bridgewater.
Board, have anything else to add? I want to entertain a motion to go along with the recommendations of the search committee, town administrator, for the appointment for Kenneth May as chief.
So moved.
Have a second?
Excuse me, subject to contract negotiations.
Yes, I'm sorry, subject to contract negotiations.
I just like to say something here, you know, these are hard things that we do with these appointments that come up there, but I've always looked at, you know, I've always looked at the rank and file, and I follow them through their careers there, and it's hard to me to get out of that track. I mean, if we have somebody that's dedicated like Mr. May is hard, and now, when I talk to the administrator, and even said the other candidate here, and he interviewed very, very well, and I have a lot of respect for you too, you know, but this is how I've always felt, you work hard or something like that, and I'm there to, got a good record like Mr. May is, and I'm there to try to promote from the ranks.
Anthony?
I'll second that motion. I will say I was really impressed with Deputy Chief Haskell. I think that we do owe it to Kenneth May for his hard work to this town, but I will say, this wasn't an easy one. I think that Mr. Haskell really impressed me, and thank you for being here tonight.
Okay. With all that being said, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, congratulations.
Good luck to you in the future.
Kenny, it's too bad a few of the guys couldn't come in to see you here tonight. We're on a two-minute recess, so you can all leave, or you want to sit and watch us. You're welcome to. Thank you very much. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I believe we've gone through everything on the agenda. I would like to entertain a motion to enter back into executive session, not to return to open session for the purpose of conducting a strategy session for non-union personnel, specifically the fire chief, also to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation, specifically Kruger versus the town of West Bridgewater, since in my opinion, as chair, deliberating an open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town. Roll call, vote?
Marrera, yes.
McKinnon, yes.
Lawrence, yes. Good night, thanks for watching.